Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the regular commission meeting of Mason County Commission for October twenty sixth. Commissioner Shute, would you do us the honor of leading us to the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, next up, roll call, please. I'm here.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I'm here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Next up, item number four, correspondence and organizational business. Do you have any correspondence to come before us today?
We do. The Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Board sent in the following: a marijuana license and change of location for two buds, liquor license for summertime resort, marijuana and liquor licenses to expire, a special occasion license for United Angels for Pets, and a marijuana license application for W A C Farms. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission sent in a letter regarding the Fishman Dam Number One Stress and Stability Analysis Course Model. Terry King sent in an application for the Mason County Clean Water District. The Economic Development Council of Mason County sent in a twenty twenty-one third quarter report, a notice of contract opening collective bargaining agreements for January one, twenty nineteen, through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-one for Public Works Maintenance and E R and R Division General Services and Appraisers. The Washington State Department of Commerce sent in a letter to inform the county of the new clean buildings performance standard and incentive funding. And Washington State Office of Financial Management sent in a letter on the twenty twenty census data.
Thank you very much. Item number four point two, staff recognition for Frank Pinter. Well, you know, ladies and gentlemen, one of our finest is leaving us. And I gotta tell you, what an incredible pleasure it has been to work with you, Frank. I mean, literally, I can't tell you how many smiles you've put on my face over the years. People will never recognize and realize how many times that you stood in the wake of a storm only to hold us up and keep us moving and keep us from falling over. I have been here a long time and I have seen it and witnessed it myself over and over again. I have watched commissioners call you for help, for support, for advice, and for maybe just to pull a rabbit out of your hat. My friend, you have been a sheer pleasure and honor to this organization. You have represented Mason County in a way that others should just dream and hope to, including myself. And the fact that you are going to be leaving us is such a sad, sad day, but at the same time, it gives you a new opportunity for your life. Recognition, a moment for recognition just doesn't quite cut it. It really honestly doesn't. Your service has gone way above and beyond. I'm gonna open it up and ask for Commissioner Shute, if you wouldn't mind, would you like to say a few words to this fine man that we are about to have walk out our doors?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Frank, first and foremost, congratulations. This is an exciting time for you as you have an opportunity to reflect back on your service to Mason County, both the public and internally with all of our departments and elected officials, first and foremost, including the commission. Having been here for a few years now, I've enjoyed having an opportunity to work with you and learn from you, and I think build a stronger county that has a very, very bright future. And so I'm grateful for all those opportunities to, you know, to just dig into the work and get things done on behalf of the public. And so while it's a bittersweet moment this morning to say thank you and wish you well in your retirement, you know, I'll always be able to look back fondly on the work that we were able to do together and that those things that we were able to accomplish together. And so just wish you all the best in your retirement and health and happiness as you move on and don't be a stranger.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Trask?
Well, Frank, you're leaving us. I don't, you know, I don't know what to say. Do I say thank you for your time? Do I say we'll miss you? Do I say all of the above? You know, coming in as a new person and having you as kind of a mentor and to guide me through the budget process and a lot of the other processes, couldn't have done it without you. It would not have been as fun. And your patience is truly appreciated. Not once did you say, God! You did it. You're awesome. And I truly enjoyed working with you. Wish you and Laura the best, many fun road trips. And enjoy the heck out of that RV. Just get out there and have fun. Don't, don't sit around the house. Be active, get out there, have fun, and don't forget about us. Or we'll find you.
Is there something, anything you'd like to say?
Absolutely, of course, Commissioner. Well, it has been a long tenure. Geez, ten years. Monday. And I want to thank all the commissioners. It's been an honor and a pleasure to work with each of you and with all of you. I've grown to respect the office and the the county. I had never been in government before and wish I had started earlier. But those are the decisions that life give you. But I want to say thank you to my staff and to really all of the people that work for Mason County. They're a wonderful group of people. All of them have the best of intentions for Mason County and do the best that they can, especially my staff. They're all very much involved in the day-to-day activities and they're the ones that made me do and made me look good in front of everybody else. They're a integral component of managing the county, and I thank them so much. And I thank each one of you for all of your counsel and insight. But I am looking forward to retirement. Laura and I do have plans. And I'm looking forward to making that part of my life going forward. So thank you, everybody. I appreciate everything that you've done, all of what you have done for the county and will be here for anything that I can help going forward as well.
Right, you have made this county a better place. You have made us commissioners better commissioners. May the rest of your journey be as exemplary as this past ten years has been. You leave us with great honor, and I gotta tell you, my friend, I'm gonna miss you more than I think most, but I've been with you for quite a long time and we've had quite a journey. And I know that you're gonna have fun because that wife of yours, that's fun. She's pretty spectacular. If you haven't had a chance to meet her, folks, she is the other side of this man, and God bless both of you on your next journey, my friend, and I hope that we can stay in touch. I look forward to speaking with you as just a regular person.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So does Laura.
God bless my friend.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you very much.
Sad moment for me, but we will go move on forward to item number four point three, news release. Public input sought for Mason County Comprehensive Parks Plan, Commissioner Shute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Public input sought for Mason County Comprehensive Parks Plan. Mason County is drafting a new Master Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Plan. This new integrated plan will replace the twenty thirteen Comprehensive Parks Plan with a single guiding document for the next six to ten years of parks and recreation activities. County residents, patrons, and interested stakeholders are invited to share their insights for the common goal of shaping future parks and recreational facilities within Mason County. Your answers will provide meaningful insights on how to best serve you as a member of our community. Mapchon Air is a location-based survey platform that takes the project to the community. Participants can provide community insights, pinpoint concerns, share comments, and have meaningful discussions with other community members about the spaces they know and value. Please visit the Mason County Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails page to learn more about the project and take the survey. Survey link, HTTPS colon backslash backslash survey dot alcomer dot com slash S three slash six five seven two four seven three slash Mason Post Survey. Please complete survey by November first. Responses are anonymous. For further information, please contact the Mason County Parks and Trails Office at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension five three five.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item number four point four, news release, Mason County Historic Preservation Commission, Michael Mc Sims. Dave, you wanna cover this one? I don't see Michael on. If not, we can do it.
And trying to get there. He was just here a second ago. Let me grab him.
Commissioners, would you rather me just go ahead and read it into the?
He's coming. He's just grabbing it right now, Commissioner. I apologize. Here he comes.
Hello.
Good morning.
Morning. Thank you for allowing us to read this news release. The Mason County Commissioners are seeking an applicant to fill two open positions on the Mason County Historic Preservation Commission. The major responsibility of the Historic Preservation Commission is to identify and actively encourage the conservation of Mason County's historic resources by initiating and maintaining a register of historic places and reviewing proposed changes to the register properties. They also work to raise community awareness of Mason County's history and historic resources and serve as Mason County's primary resources in matters of history, historic planning, and preservation. Commission members serve three-year terms and meet monthly during business hours at the county's offices in Shelton. During COVID, these meetings are being held via Zoom. Both of these terms are open due to unexpected vacancies and will expire in November of two thousand and twenty-two. Applicants must be residents of Mason County. Interested persons are encouraged to apply for this commission by completing an advisory board form that can be downloaded from the Mason County website or by calling the Commissioner's Office at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension four one nine, or three six zero two seven five four four six seven, extension four one nine. Completed applications should be submitted to the Commissioner's Office at four eleven North Fifth Street, Shelton. Positions are open until filled. If there are questions about these positions, please contact Michael Mc Sims at three six zero four two seven nine six seven zero, extension five seven one, or by email at hpc@co.mason.wa.us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kansas, is there any other correspondence or organizational business to come before the body?
No, there is not.
Okay, then we're gonna move on to item number five, which is our open forum for citizens' input. This is the opportunity for people in the community to speak to the commission on items that are not on the agenda. If they are on the agenda, we ask that you wait. You'll be given an opportunity to speak at that time, especially if you'd like to testify. With that being said, if it's not on the agenda, this is your opportunity, but please remember it's a three-minute per person maximum allotment for time to speak, fifteen minutes total for everybody, so please be brief. With that being said, if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to the commission on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand. I see none. If you don't know how to raise your hand, please unmute yourself and say your name, and I'll call on you. I see none. One more time, if you'd like to speak to the commission on any item not on the agenda, please unmute yourself, say your name, so I can call on you. Excellent. We are moving forward to item number six, the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
It has been moved in second for the adoption of today's agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item number seven, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and September twentieth, twenty twenty-one briefing minutes as presented.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the August twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and September twentieth, twenty twenty-one briefing minutes as presented with no changes. Any comments or pools? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up is our approval of our action agenda. All items on the action agenda will be read to the public and read into the record. After we do so, you'll be given an opportunity to take any item off that you would like for a separate vote. If you would like to ask a question to decide whether to take it off for a separate vote, you'll be given that opportunity as well. But if you want to testify, please, we'll just take it off for a separate vote. You'll be given your opportunity to testify at that time. With that being said, Commissioner Trask, would you read item number eight point one through eight point four? Commissioner Shute, would you read eight point five through eight point nine, and I will read ten to fourteen?
Item eight point one, approval of warrants and treasure electronic remittances, claims clearing fund warrant number eight zero eight three six four eight through eight zero eight four zero zero one in amount of one million nine hundred and fifteen thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-two cents. Direct deposit fund warrant number eight one three four eight through eight one seven four zero in amount of seven hundred and forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents. Salary clearing fund warrant number seven zero zero six one nine nine through seven zero zero six two three three in amount of nine hundred and ninety-nine thousand twelve dollars and fifty-five cents. Item eight point two, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, and nine fifteen AM to certify to the county assessor the amount of taxes levied for county purposes and the amount of taxes levied for current expense and road for twenty twenty-two. An increase to the current expense and road property tax levies for twenty twenty-two may be considered. Item eight point three, approval to set a public hearing on Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty-one at nine AM to consider adoption of the twenty twenty-two budget for Mason County. Copies of the preliminary budget will be available to the public on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. Item eight point four, approval to appoint Terry King to the, for the third year or for the three-year citizen team term and Glenn Landrum for the two-year citizen term on the Clean Water District Advisory Committee.
Item eight point five, approval to reappoint Jan Goodpastor to a second term on the Mason County Historic Preservation Committee for a term ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Item eight point six, approval of contract number K three one six, amendment number one between the Washington State Department of Agriculture and Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board to extend the timeframe for county, for the county to carry out the remaining work on said contract from the date of execution until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And approval of contract number K three one seven seven, amendment number one between the Washington State Department of Agriculture and Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board to extend the timeframe for the county to carry out the remaining work on said contract from the date of execution until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Item eight point seven, approval of the State Homeland Security Program Fiscal Year Twenty-One Grant Contract Number E two two dash zero nine eight for seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars from the Washington State Military Department and the United States Department of Homeland Security from September first, twenty twenty-one to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three to allow the Emergency Management Coordinator lead to sign the contract. Item eight point eight, approval to appoint Allison Boss to the Lewis Mason Thurston Area Agency on Aging for a two-year term ending December twenty twenty-three. And item eight point nine, approval to authorize the county engineer to sign the joint funding agreement number two two Y G J F A zero three four zero zero with the United States Department of the Interior, United States Geological Survey for a period of October first, twenty twenty-one to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two for stream flow monitoring gauge stations on the Skokomish River.
Item number eight point one zero, approval to appoint William B. Zanson to the Mason County Noxious Weed Control Board District Number Two for a four-year term. Item number eight point one one, approval for the chair to sign a letter of no objection for a special occasion liquor license for the United Angels for Pets for an event on October twenty ninth, thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at the White Barn Decor. Item number eight point one two, approval to concur with the Pacific County Appointment of Tony Gwynn to the Timberland Regional Library Board of Trustees for a term that runs from December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. Item number eight point one three, approval of a sole source purchase of video recording equipment from GTAC Incorporated using funds from Senate Bill five oh nine two for the sheriff's office. Item eight point one four, approval to set a public hearing on Tuesday, November ninth, twenty twenty-one, at nine fifteen AM to take public comment on the draft plan for the Mason County Commission Districts as proposed by the Mason County Redistricting Citizens Advisory Committee. The draft plan is available on the county's website at www.masoncountywa.gov. Now that these items have been read into the record, now is your opportunity to ask any questions you may have to help you decide whether to take something off for a separate vote. If you have any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing none, please feel free to unmute yourself, say your name, and give me an opportunity to call on you. If there's any items that you would like taken off for a separate vote, please raise your hand or unmute yourself, take mute off and say your name so I can have an opportunity to call on you. Any items that I take it off for a separate vote? Commissioners, do you have any items you would like taken off for a separate vote?
I do not.
Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of today's action agenda items eight point one through eight point one four is read.
I'll second.
It has been moved in second for the approval of the action agenda in its entirety, eight point one to eight point one four as read. Are there any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next up, item number nine, other business department heads or elected officials, are there any department heads or elected officials who would like to speak to the commission at this time or comment to the public? Please unmute yourself, say your name, so I can call on you. Any department heads or elected officials who'd like to speak to the community, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I call on you. I see none. With that, we will move forward to item number ten, which is our public hearings. Let's see, I'm gonna go ahead and open this hearing. This is hearing under ten point one, public hearing to approve an ordinance establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Boyer Road from mile post zero point zero 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 to mile post one point zero four six. Staff, Mike Collins, presenter.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Mike.
Boyer Road is one of our roads that are on the, originally was a gravel surface, and now we have a program to convert some of these roads to a chip seal or asphalt surface. So this summer, the county forces went out and did a really nice job on Boyer Road, and so that removes it from being a primitive road. So therefore, we'd like to upgrade the signing on it and speed limit signs, and we've invest in some of the curb signs and additional signage out there. So now it'll be a fully maintained county functioning road.
Excellent. Is there anybody who has any questions from staff regarding their presentation? If so, please unmute yourself or raise your hand. But unmute yourself, say your name, give me an opportunity to call on you. Anybody who'd like to ask any questions, unmute yourself, say your name, so I can call on you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, then we will close that aspect of it and move to public testimony. Is there any public who would like to testify? If so, please raise your hand. If there's any public who'd like to testify, raise your hand or unmute yourself, say your name, and give me the opportunity to call on you. Anybody who would like to testify on this issue, please unmute yourself, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will close that aspect of this and move to commissioner deliberations and or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of an ordinance establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Boyer Road from mile post zero point zero 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 to mile post one point zero four six.
I will second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance establishing a twenty-five mile per hour speed limit on Boyer Road from mile post zero point zero 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 to mile post one point zero four six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, that hearing is closed. We will now open our second hearing, item number ten point two. Open this hearing to approve franchise agreement between Mason County and Orchard Beach Community Group to construct, operate, maintain their water system along the Orchard Beach Drive. Staff, again, Mike Collins, present, presenter.
Yes, Commissioners, a few months ago, Eric Oss, Vice President, Orchard Beach Community Group, applied for a renewal franchise of Public Works, reviewed and updated the franchise language. We recommend having approval of this and got this before you know.
Thank you. Is there anybody who has any questions regarding the presentation from staff? If anybody in the public has any questions regarding the presentation from staff, please unmute yourself, say your name, and give me an opportunity to call on you. I see no public, but one more time, if anybody would like to ask questions of staff, unmute yourself, say, say your name, and I will call on you. Hearing none, we will move to, we will close that aspect and move to public testimony. Is anybody in the public who would like to testify on this issue? Please unmute yourself, say your name, and give me a chance to call on you. If there's anybody who would like to testify on this issue, raise your hand, unmute yourself, say your name, so I can call on you. Either way, we'll make it happen. I see none. I will close public testimony and move to commissioner deliberations and or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the franchise agreement between Mason County and Orchard Beach Community Group to construct, operate, and maintain their water system along the Orchard Beach Drive.
Okay. It has been moved in second to approve the franchise agreement between Mason County and Orchard Beach Community Group to construct, operate, maintain their water system along the Orchard Beach Drive. Any further discussions or comments, Commissioners? Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries, and we adjourn the hearing. But we go ahead and move back to our next item on our agenda, which is our board reports and calendars. Commissioner Shute, if you don't mind leading us off, Commissioner Trask, and then myself.
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. After our meeting today, have the open house goodbye for Frank with, it's open to the county. May also join in on the electric vehicle infrastructure group meeting for the PRTPO, and then out visiting the Skokomish Valley this afternoon or later this morning with Public Works. Also have the Housing Behavioral Health Advisory Board meeting and meeting with MaceCom to wrap up discussions on the computer aided dispatch and record management systems presentations that happened over the past couple of weeks. Then back for budget workshops and briefings as well as a meeting next week with Mason Health and the BH ASO regarding medical clearance for behavioral health patients at Mason Health. And then also have my check-in with BH ASO staff as well as the Mason Crisis Services System of Care Coordination Group ahead of our next commission meeting. As well as the Mason Crisis Services System of Care Coordination Group, uh, ahead of our next commission meeting.
All right, later on today, I have, um. A meeting with the Community Action Council. We have a Power of the Purse catch-up. Tomorrow, another Community Action Council meeting and, well, oh wow, two of them today, tomorrow for Community Action Council. Um, are in, uh, EOC meeting on Thursday, Public Works Board Executive, uh, Team Meeting. Um. And then we're having our Septic expected, expected on, or inspected on Friday if anybody wants to come out and watch. Sunday is Halloween, um, so put your best mask on and come out, have some fun. Uh, let's see, then we have our briefing on Monday. A WASAC virtual committee meeting. Um. I will be having lunch with, uh, the chair for the Public Works Board. We have our EOC meeting again, and every week I have a Public Works Board Executive Committee meeting. Um, then our Public Works Board meeting all day Friday. Um, and then there's a chatter cook-off on the sixth. Encourage people to come and help us raise some money to help one of our people. Um, special happy birthday to my daughter on the seventh. She's pretty amazing back on our briefings. WASAC virtual. Um, assembly and then we're back for a commission meeting.
Thank you. So over the last couple of weeks, uh, attended the ORCA meetings, uh, Olympic Clean Air Regional, uh. Clean Air Authority Economic Development Council Meetings, Area Command, uh, Peninsula Regional Transportation. Over and over again, we've had quite a few meetings there, Mason Transit Authority Meeting, Eagles, uh, meeting. North Mason Chamber of Commerce, Mason County House and Authority, uh, Mount Mariah. I was the speaker for the, the Shelton Chamber of State of the co- community. Uh, Audit Committee Meeting, another Peninsula Regional Transportation Meeting, we were all together for the Mason Transit, uh, Authority, uh. Uh, Board Structure Meeting. Uh, I will also be at the open house saying goodbye to Frank. Uh, I will be together with, uh, Commissioner Shutey on the EV infrastructure. Meeting, uh, North Mason Chamber Meeting, we definitely have our area commands, we have our briefings. Cemetery Board Meeting, Budget Workshop, uh, I'm gonna try, I didn't make it the last, I'm gonna try to make it for the Port of Allen Meeting, Left Board Meeting. Law Enforcement and Firefighters, that is, uh. Mason County Sportsman Association has me going there for a meeting. Another Peninsula Regional Transportation Meeting, we will somewhere along the line. Have a canvassing board meeting in there and I want to give a special thank you to Commissioner Shutey. Uh, Commissioner, I don't know if I've said this enough, but I cannot remember a time where we had so much, uh. Um, interaction with the Scope Valley as we have with you in the position that you hold and how you go out there. Especially during these times, it's important that this commission knows the things that are happening out there. It's been a historic issue. It hasn't just started, it's been historic, but your participation has been exemplary. You definitely. Uh, when the water rises, you show and I just wanted to tell you that, uh, I appreciate it and I'm sure, uh, by the nods that Commissioner Trask appreciates it. And I also get, uh, calls from some of those in your community that appreciate it as well. So, thank you for that. With that, that brings us back and then of course we will have our regular briefings and we'll do it all over again. Uh, is there anything further to come before the commission?
Yeah, just real quick, if I might.
Please.
Thank Public Works for their help and for their diligence on this as well. They're, they're doing, they're doing a lot and also didn't say it when I should have, but thanks, Mike, for, uh. Handling the hearings and and moving those forward as well.
You know, as we've had these storms, again, you're right to, to make a comment about our public works. Again, people never realize how bad those roads get because it's cleaned up before you get there. Trees were coming down all over the place and I come back through and they're gone. That's not accidental, folks. That's your public work staff that are out there on the roads. Trying to make sure that you guys are, are safe and taking care of. Nobody ever gives them the compliments that they deserve on the road. I take that back. One year we had snow again. I loved it as I was out trying to help people, uh, get onto the, the roads again. As our crews were coming by, people were coming out of their homes and applauding them. I love that. It was quite a sight. Somewhere it's actually even recorded. Uh, I'll see if I can find that. It'd be a nice thing to share because it was in the Beards Cove community and everybody was coming out of their homes screaming, hooting and hollering to see them. Uh, Loretta, I see you unmuted yourself.
Oh, Commissioner, just wanted to acknowledge that, um, that care for community. And the community's safety is across the board throughout the whole organization and you can. Our, our crew are, are first on the line there, so, um. They're the ones that are observing and taking care of things before we even know about it often, so. Um, just a, a huge thanks to everyone that makes that happen.
Wonderful. Commissioners, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
It has been moved in seconded, uh, that we adjourn hearing, no objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
See you later.